I would like to call tonight's meeting on February the 12th to order. My name is Denny Campo. I will be subbing for our regular P&amp;Z Chairman Joel Powell, who was unable to attend the meeting tonight. Before we get started with the issues on our program, I wanted to do a few house cleaning What we need to do, there are a number of items that need to be...
I can't find you and we can't read.
You can't sign in?
No.
We're having trouble with one of our members here signing in. Just take one moment, please. All right, once again, we have some housekeeping issues to be addressed, and that item concerned being tabled to the April 9th meeting. So the first zoning request, Z-17-014, which is a development of mixed-use project, this item is being tabled to the April 9th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve by Leslie Lightfoot, and second by Monte Bai. Those in favor, please vote. The second item to be tabled is the zoning request, Z-17-021, the rezoning from CG, conditional, to development of mixed-use project. This item is to be tabled to the April 9th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? And a second. Tom Bartlett made the motion to approve. It's seconded by Sherri Harrington. Those in favor? Seven yeas, zero nay. The next zoning request is Z-18-003, rezoning from R-20 to R-D, conditional, for development of 43 single-family homes. This item will be tabled to the April 9th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by David Monroe. Monte Bai has seconded. Those in favor? Seven oh in favor. Next item is zoning request, Z-18-005, rezoning from CG to O-1 for the dormitory for Atlanta Dream Center. This item will be tabled to the April 9th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? And a second. Sherri Harrington, motion to approve, and Leslie Lightfoot, second. Seven oh in favor. All right, the final item to be tabled is zoning request, Z-17-015, which was a conditional for veterinarian clinic. Smyrna Community Development has tabled this item indefinitely. Do I have a motion to approve? And a second. David Monroe approved, and Tom Bartlett, second. I need a vote for those in favor. Seven oh in favor. All right, now the first item on the docket tonight is a zoning request, Z-18-004, it's rezoning from R-20 to R-A-D, conditional, for two residential lots at 4.69 units per acre. The system we use is that Smyrna Community Development will make the first presentation, and then it'll be followed up by the developer or an individual representing the zoning request, and then we will open the floor to anyone who wants to speak in favor or against any of the items that we're going to be presenting this evening.
All right, thank you. This request will be heard tonight. You guys will make a recommendation to Mayor and Council. It'll go to Mayor and Council on April 16th, and that will be where the final decision will be made. This rezoning request is from R-20 Cobb County to R-A-D, conditional, Smyrna. The property is 2451 Adams Drive. It's approximately a half acre in size. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into two lots. The first lot along Belmont Avenue will have the existing single-family home, which will remain. The second lot to the south, where it's vacant site, they will, they're proposing to build a new home. If y'all remember, approximately a year and a half ago to two years, we annexed and rezoned the property up there that's colored in green, that's sort of catty-corner across Adams The subject property currently in Cobb County has a future land use designation of low-density residential. With the 4.69 units per acre density, a land use change from low-density residential to medium-density residential is required for zoning. And we did the similar land use change for that property. We annexed and rezoned several years ago. Well, if you look at the zoning map, all the uncolored areas are Cobb County property, and they have a future land use designation of low-density residential, which is essentially their default land use designation. Here's the proposed site plan, and just again, to reorient you with the site, the existing home is the home to the north. That will remain. They'll subdivide the property in half, and then build a new home on the southern lot. The applicant is requesting several variances with this request. The first being setback variances for the front setback, which is a reduction from 35 feet down to 20 feet, and then a rear yard setback from 30 down to 15. So the applicant is requesting the following minimum setbacks for their lots, and that's a front setback of 20, a side setback of 10, and a rear setback of 15. With this request, they're also proposing a 10-foot right-of-way reduction along Belmont Avenue, and a 5-foot right-of-way reduction along, or dedication along Adams Drive. This is the new proposed home. Here's some pictures of the subject property, and then pictures of the surrounding properties. Community Development recommends approval of the zoning from R-20 to R-A-D, conditional, for the two lots, with the following conditions. I'm not going to read them all out to you, but standard conditions from Section 1201 apply pertaining to stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, the burying of debris, and basically tree ordinance requirements and landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions, staff has added numerous special conditions. The first being stipulation number nine, which establishes minimum setbacks, which I read to you earlier. Number 10 requires a minimum driveway length, 22 feet. 11 requires a minimum floor area for the home of 1,800 square feet, and 12 requires a minimum lot size of around 9,000 square feet. 13 keeps the minimum lot width at 100 feet. 14 prohibits a lock, or a curb cut on Belmont Avenue. 15 is the 5-foot right-of-way dedication along Adams Drive. 16 is a 10-foot right-of-way dedication along Belmont Avenue. 17 is a requirement for when that dedication is made, that they'd have to relocate that fence or remove it completely, because it would be in the city right-of-way. 18 is a requirement that approval of the zoning would be conditioned upon the development of the site and substantial compliance to the site plan submitted. 19 is tying the zoning of the property to the building elevation submitted. 20 deals with the composition of the homes as far as the facade materials, and 21 is a list of additional stipulations the applicant has agreed to. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the board for Community Development? No. All right, next up, we would like the developer or individual speaking on behalf of the zoning request.
First of all, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Glad to see you in that spot. I hope Joel's okay.
Could you state your, state your name for the...
I'm going to.
Those in attendance.
I will. For the record, my name's Garvis Samz. I'm with the, I'm with the law firm, Samz, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally, which is in Marietta, and I represent Mr. Ron Dickinson concerning these applications for both annexation and rezoning. I was, you were on such a roll there with the tabling of cases, I was glad that this one was going to be, going to be heard. We think Rusty, of course, has done an excellent job setting out the proposal to you. It's pretty straightforward, and there's been some applications around the corner on Dixie Avenue that you've recently heard and approved, specifically with respect to a five-lot subdivision fronting Dixie Avenue. So this is not a, not a new type proposal. This property, as you can see, is 0.426 acres. It's two conditional, excuse me, contiguous lots. It was one original lot that was actually built along the house back at the very end of the, of the World War II, around 1944, 1945. It was lot 62 of that subdivision called Belmont Subdivision, and at the time, Adams Drive didn't exist. So in the 50s, Mr. and Mrs. Adams conveyed 10 feet on that side to Cobb County, and Adams Drive was, as you can see, created as a result of that. Under your future land use map, this has been identified as a, as a property that's ripe for annexation and rezoning, specifically because if you look at the overall picture, which Mr. Martin and Mr. Sudrith, I'm sure, have shown you in, in your work session leading up to this, there is a sizable amount of properties which constitute an unincorporated island, and cities and counties are prohibited from creating those, but sometimes by happenstance they occur over a period of time. With that five-lot subdivision we did a couple of months ago, and with this division of this one lot into two, we're chipping away slowly, I say "we," people are chipping away at this unincorporated island, and in that regard, Cobb County supports the application. They issue what's called a letter of not objection when they feel like it comports with what they ultimately want to see for the city in this. So the county's on board. Your staff has recommended that the application be approved. We are asking for a rezoning from R-20 to R-A-D, conditional. Historically, but interestingly, about six months ago, this application was filed by Mr. Dickinson, and he got to planning and zoning, and they were processing it, and they said, "Well, this doesn't have the contiguity needed in order to be able to annex it into the city from Cobb County." And at first glance, it did appear that way, but, but I met with your city attorney, Scott Cochran, and, and we looked at how Belmont became a road, and how it ended up being annexed into the city, and the county, the city attorney was able to surmise and render a legal opinion to Community Development that the property was annexable, did have the correct contiguity. So, so we're here with a blessing from your staff, but also with the city attorney as well. We, in addition to not having objection for the county and having staff's recommendation for approval, we have not heard any opposition, which doesn't mean there's some not seated behind me tonight, but, but we have had a couple of phone calls, and we've responded to those. There's not a pending or an active organization that really takes into this property. So there's no, no real go-to person in terms of a civic organization to deal with. I guess part of it might be looked at by Williams Park, that group, from time to time, but we've not heard from them in opposition to this. We submitted a letter of stipulations and conditions, it's dated March the 2nd, and you'll notice a difference in the architectural renderings and elevations you have now and those that we submitted, and the reason for that is, I felt like, and feel like, I knew that, that original exhibit, which I think was a part of the zoning analysis, there were certain portions that, that were predominantly 100% horizontal siding. So we've added components of stone and brick on all sides, so we comply with the city's ordinances, and that was a part of our stipulation letter, which you were copied on, on March the 2nd. What Mr. Dickinson wants to do is keep the house, this there, that's, it's, as you can see, has point of ingress and egress off of Adams Drive, and then build a custom, quality-built single-family detached residence, also with access off of Adams Drive. And if you look at what you've been provided, I think this was some of the last pages, you can see that architectural, the rendering and the elevation, and I think it goes, it may go into some floor plans as well. We are agreeable to all the staff's standard recommendations. There are special stipulations and conditions, and also everything that's in that March 2nd letter. I know you have some other things on, on your agenda, but just a few salient points that you may want to consider. This is a for-sale home only. There's not going to be any type of rental circumstances, so that's a condition of the, of the zoning. Another condition of the zoning, of course, is we're complying with all the stormwater management features that your city engineer may require during the plan review process, and everything which Mr. Stokes, your Public Works Director, has or will impose with respect to public, public works. And your fire marshal, we, we've talked with him as well, and he's got ample room on all sides of the property to fight a fire if it, if it happened. We have left sort of a unique stipulation in my March 2nd letter, and that gives Mr. Sudrith the latitude or the ability to make minor modifications. If the plan has to be tweaked during plan review, he can't approve anything that increases the density or increases the height, or does anything that would make this more dense or intense development, but it just gives staff the latitude where we don't have to bring every little change back, either to you or the, or the mayor and council. So given the fact we have no opposition, and the county's for it, and your city seems to be for it, and I'm for it, we do ask that you recommend to the mayor and city council that it be approved as presented. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the, from the board for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, we'd like to open the floor to those who would like to speak in favor or opposed to this zoning issue currently up. Okay. I will now call for a motion concerning this zoning request from our board members. Monte Bai? And your motion is to...
I move that we vote to approve zoning crest, zoning request, 718-004, rezoning for R-20 to R-A-D, conditional, for two residential lots at 4.69 units per acre, .426 acres, land lot 519, 2451 Adams Street. Ronald S. Dickinson.
Motion by Monte Bai, and second by Sherri Harrington. What is the, those voting in favor of this request? Pass seven oh. All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is the plat approval with variances for 1102 Churchill Street. Variance request, V-18-02. The first presentation will be made by Community, Smyrna Community Development.
Good evening. This is a plat approval with variances at 1102 Church Street. It'll be heard tonight by you, and be heard next Monday by Mayor and Council. This is .810 acres in Ward III. It's one vacant lot now. It was previously two lots, but at some point it was consolidated into one. Applicant is requesting to revert back to the original subdivision plat. Will retain the R-15 zoning that it currently is. So the applicant wants to revert the one lot of record back to the two lots. It's platted in 1913, requesting two variances to reduce the minimum lot width, setback line from 85 feet to 49 feet, and a reduction of the minimum side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. It'll still maintain the R-15 minimum lot size of approximately 17,000 square feet. It's just a reduction of the lot width to 50 feet and side setback to 5 feet. Proposed lots will be consistent with the existing development pattern in the surrounding area. This is the original plat. It's hard to see, but they were 50, approximately 50 feet wide lots and about 210 feet in length. This is the proposed site plan. As I mentioned, the front setback will stay the same, rear setback will stay the same, and the side will be reduced to 5 feet. It's 353 feet in length. Again, in half, so two 50-foot, 50-foot width lots. Both will be 353 feet in length. These are the proposed building elevations. This picture of the subject property and the adjacent properties. And we've recommended approval with the variances requested for the reversion of the, the configuration of the lots as it was in 1913.
Any questions from any of the board members for Community Development? Next up will be developer or individual speaking on behalf of this plat approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Brad Thompson. I'm a little hoarse. I'm getting on, I'm on the back end of a cold, so I apologize. But as usual, Community Development has done a great job presenting the proposal. It's pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot of mystery here. It was originally platted in the early part of the 20th century as two 50-foot wide lots, and I just would, all I'm asking for is to go back to that original plat, so I can build two homes on this. These homes would be, you saw the elevations, they're approximately 2,000, 2,200 square foot in size, and will be around $400,000 in price. The lot just to the west of this is our, is an existing 50-foot lot of record, and so I don't feel the request is anything unusual, but I do ask that you, respectfully ask that you approve my, approve my application, and I'll reserve the rest of the time for questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Thompson, concerning this plat approval? Thank you. Well, now open the floor to those in attendance, see who would like to speak in favor or opposed
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning and Zoning Committee. My name is Shawn Freeman. I live on Glen Rose Drive, which is approximately 100 yards, well, less than 100 yards from that. The end of my subdivision is probably 30 yards from that. You're speaking about going back to the 1913 zoning? When we already have congestion with the new Publix and everything? With the new development that you made on Church Street? I have no idea how they're going to be able to get out of their driveway. It takes me 15 minutes to make a left-hand turn, because everyone runs the stop sign between 7:05 and 7:15. You know, it's just one of those things that we need to think about. You know, we talk about livability, but we're getting away from that. It's all about profitability right now. If we continue to go like that, that's a great lot for one home. They can get out, get in. But two homes, it's going to be an accident that's going to cause someone bodily harm. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other, like to speak in favor against this project? All right, if not, I'd like to call for a motion concerning this plat approval from the P&amp;Z Board. Do I have a motion? And your motion is?
Based on the previous discussions, I move that we approve plat approval, move forward with plat approval with variance for 1102 Church Street. Variance request, V-18-20, .810 acres, land lot 487, 1102 Church Street. Brad Thompson.
Okay, Monte Bai has made a motion to approve. Tom Bartlett has seconded the motion. The motion passes seven oh. Next item on our agenda is the plat approval for 990 Pebblebrook Road, 1.02 acres of land. First presentation will be made by Smyrna Community Development with their recommendation First presentation will be made by Smyrna Community Development with their recommendation.
This request is an annexation and then just a plat approval. So you guys will just be acting on the approval to subdivide the property into two lots. You guys will hear this case tonight. It'll move forward to mayor and council for next Monday on the nineteenth. And at that meeting, they'll take the final, final vote. The subject property is nine ninety Pebblebrook Road. The property in the county is owned R twenty. They're requesting the annex and into the city with the same zoning designation of R twenty. They're proposing to subdivide this one acre property into two twenty thousand square-foot lots, which meets the requirements of the R twenty zoning designation. Here's a better view of those lots for you so you understand what they're proposing. They got a thirty-five-foot front setback, a twelve-foot side, and a, and a thirty-five-foot rear setback. The first lot will be twenty thousand square feet and the, and the second lot will be twenty-four thousand square feet, more or less. Since the lots meet the city's minimum requirements for the R twenty zoning district, Committee Development has recommended approval.
Just one question. This meets all the standards of the R twenty zoning district, right? It's more procedural than zoning.
Yes. This is not a zoning change. The zoning is remaining the same. They are just subdividing the property in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? All right. At this point, we'd like to invite anyone here to speak on behalf of this plat request. No one here. And the next thing is, I would like to ask for a motion on this request, zoning request. Leslie Lightfoot makes a motion to approve, second by Earl Rice. Was it six oh? Yeah, approve six oh. The final item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the February twelfth, twenty eighteen Plan and Zoning Meeting minutes. All right. Made a motion to approve by Earl Rice, second by Leslie Lightfoot. Seven oh in favor. Is there anything you need to add? All right, with that, no other business on the docket?